Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the December 13th River Falls Council Meeting. First thing we'll do is stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristy, can we have a roll call, please?
Biersted.
Here.
Bjork.
Here.
Kronk.
Here.
Gagne.
Morissette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Watson.
Here. Okay, next we have approval of minutes from the November 22nd meeting.
I still move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, approval of the bills with Mr. Kronk.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the bills subject to the comptroller in the amount of
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now time for public comments. If anybody in the audience has anything they'd like to stand up and talk about, now would be the time. Is anybody in the audience? Otherwise, first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna recognize Luanne. Luanne Hackett, our city clerk, will be retiring. So I got some stuff jotted, we got some stuff jotted down here. Let's see, Luanne began her career at the City of River Falls on September 10th, 1987. I didn't know we hired minors.
Yeah.
She must've started junior high.
Yeah.
She was hired by account manager Kyle Galke and utility director Kevin DeVillers. Luanne worked as a part-time accounting clerk and was paid $4 an hour.
Oof.
Overpaid.
Yeah, really.
On January 1st, 1989, Luanne had new year tri- oh yeah, she had new triplets, Nick, Vince, and Tony. She took maternity leave and returned to work later in the year. In 1989, city clerk Lloyd Ostness retired and Dorothy Frederick assumed the clerk responsibilities. Julie Bergstrom was hired as the finance director, city treasurer, and Luanne's responsibilities were split between the city and the utility. She worked closely with Julie in the finance department. She also became the deputy clerk. Luanne's first presidential election was in 1992. She recalls that city staff worked the entire night of that election. On January 1st, 2006, Luanne was appointed as a city clerk and has served as clerk since then. When Luanne began employment with the city, the population was only 10,219. Now the population is 15,229. So we just wanted to tell Luanne, thank you for everything you've done, Luanne. Thank you for all the work you've done. You've made it a lot easier for us to work here. The elections have gone great since you've been around. Twenty-nine years is a long time and we wish you all the very best in your retirement. And Luanne, we want you to stand up so we can all clap for you, so everybody can see you.
And I got a little personal story with Luanne. I don't know if she remembers, but when I
was gonna run, when I was thinking about running for mayor, I came in, I talked to Luanne, and I says, "Well, what do you think, what do you think a person should do?" I said, "I'm interested in running." She goes, "Well, maybe you should sit on a board first, so you know what to do and, you know, give you an ideal of how the city runs and everything." I said, "Ah, I'm gonna start at the top and I'll work my way down."
I appreciate Luanne's advice. So, okay. And we're gonna have a little party for Luanne
on Friday, so all the cities invited, or all the city staff's invited. Let's see. So we are gonna close the council hearing and open up a public hearing on ordinance 2016-18, amending section 10.12.030, the official parking control maps. This is for the 400 to 500 block of West Maple Street and the 800 block of East Cascade Avenue. This is a second reading and a disposition, and this ordinance would change the following. 400 to 500 block of West Maple Street, it would remove the existing parking prohibition, prohibitions, and establish two handicap permanent spots per request from the Montessori School. And the 800 block of East Cascade, it would establish permanent no parking zone. Is there anybody in the audience who has anything they'd like to stand up and say about this? Nobody? Okay. We'll close the public hearing and reopen the council hearing. And if I entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve ordinance 2016-18.
Second.
Is there any questions or comments on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next we'll move on to consent agenda. It's a resolution authorizing the dedication of easements to St. Croix County on Mann Lane. This resolution would execute two easements. One easement dedicates 17 feet of city-owned land for the purpose of drainage along Mann Valley, or Mann Lane. And the second easement dedicates an additional 30 by 10 feet easement at a culvert crossing under Mann Lane for the purpose of drainage structure maintenance. The other one is resolution adopt approving 2017 to 2021, the five-year capital improvement plan. This would approve the fiscal capital improvement plan, including the vehicle replacement plan. Does anybody need to poll anything? Otherwise, I don't entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve consent agenda, items three and four.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, ordinance, move down to ordinance and resolutions. Ordinance 2017-01, amending section 10.12.030. This is official parking control map. This is 15-minute parking zone at 127 North Main Street. This is the first reading. This is a ordinance which would add a 15-minute parking only on approximately 24-feet zone on the west side of Main Street near 127 Main Street, North Main Street. The second reading and disposition will be January 10th. Does anybody in the council have any questions? Okay. Otherwise, we'll move on to resolution approving the 2016 budget adjustments. This resolution would amend the 2016 budget for specific revenue and expenditure line items, which are detailed in the packet. These are funds available for the adjustments. I don't entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion. We approve the resolution for 2016 budget adjustments.
Second.
Questions or comments? Kristy, can I have a roll call, please? For the budget items?
Yes.
Kronk.
Yes.
Morissette.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Biersted.
Yes.
Bjork.
Yes.
Okay, let's see. Next is a resolution approving the naming rights policy. The naming rights policy would create guidelines and provide future guidance for naming landmarks in the City of River Falls. Approval of the naming rights policy is recommended by UWRF Falls students. Who, a little background on this, it was actually, it's, I'm assuming it's you guys in the back. These were the, these were the students that came up with the resolution for us, having a policy for naming rights. So they took it and, and they worked with the city on doing this. So I will entertain a motion on that.
I have questions.
Oh, yep.
I'll make a motion. We approve the resolution for naming rights.
Second.
Okay, then, go ahead.
All right, so I think it'd be you guys, and then I would ask, so some of it were, I agree that we need to have some policy on this, but it's just landmarks that, we're not looking at streets at all on this. And Scott, maybe you might wanna jump in on that as well, but it's only landmarks and pieces of property, not streets.
So the students were asked to look at a naming rights policy, and we did have some discussion with them as staff about what that means. Part of their class assignment, though, is to identify the scope of the policy.
Yep.
So that's one of the things we considered, but I think maybe they can answer the question. It's kinda how the scope came together and what they...
Yeah. And we have a just really brief presentation, so this is really small. So the goal of the project, what we got handed to us was just kind of, just create city naming rights, look at kinda what a fee structure would be, if there would need to be funds, if there need to be background checks, if we wanted to market it, kinda stuff like that. And then, these were a list of previous, and it's really small, previous things in the city that were named, such as Brandon's Park, Hoffman Park, White Pathway. And there was really no guidelines on how they were previously named. Just, they were just named for, like, Hoffman Park was named for a former mayor, stuff like that. So we had a lot of questions, too. What would qualify as a donation? What would be named? So we kinda did our own kinda mini research project. We looked at other comparable cities. I know we looked at Chippewa Falls, Wenaki down in kinda southern Wisconsin. We looked at other things within the city and stuff like that. And then we had a meeting with the city administrator, and we kind of got more guidelines for, asked you after deceased people or family names. In no way is this a sponsorship or advertisement. And then major donations would be kinda $25,000 or more. And then you already have the policy in front of you. This is kinda, I have to log in quick. So, do you have any other questions?
I do.
Okay.
All right, so on the background research, I think it's important for us to have that background research, but some of the things that you're asking for on there, you're looking for a criminal history check, a driver's record check, verification of employment history and educational references. I guess I don't see where there's a
Okay.
...need for to know if somebody's donating this in the name of this family, what their educational background is, or what their driving record is.
Okay, yeah. So we just, what was, what we were gonna do was use a background check that was kind of already in place through the city, and I believe this is just the one when they hire city employees. It's just a really standard one, I mean.
Yeah.
If I may, it appears that the, any background check might include those things, but it's not necessarily requires. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that it said "may," but then, but does "may" become practice, which happens too often in politics and government?
Well, you know, it's, just, I can only speak as a lawyer. We take "may" to be optional.
Okay. I don't quite, I think too often it becomes practice. So I have some issues with that, because I don't want that to become practice, and I know it says "may." As well, I have another question, too, on donation. It says, "The donor will request naming rights." What happens if somebody donates a piece of property or a landmark and they're, they don't care what the name is? Do, does it go on name, or do they have to request?
I believe that would just be up to the city, then. I believe down in, let's see, in the requests part, I don't know. I guess we don't have a part, but I think that would just kinda be left up to the city at that point.
If I understand it right, I think anything over $25,000 in value needs to be agreed to by the city council or approved by the city council.
Right.
In our meeting with the city administrator that we had, we kinda came to that number. Initially, in our first draft, we only had it down at 5,000. Being college students, we're not very good estimation with money. So we, so we agreed upon $25,000 would qualify as a major donation. Anything less could just go through without council approval.
Right. And Scott, back to your thing where the council has to approve it, no matter what it is, but if somebody doesn't give a name, we have nothing to approve?
Yeah, or we could designate it, I suppose.
And then, does that mean we become the committee of trying to come up with the name?
Theoretically, I suppose it does.
Or the planning commission.
Or the planning commission, something like that.
That's happened in the past.
So council member Bjork, back to your, one of the original questions was related to street names. So that, that is not, that's kind of excluded. You could, I suppose, ask for renaming an existing street, and it could be considered as part of this policy, but we didn't, we didn't go into street namings. We did talk about some of the things that are more common for cities to get requests, so the bridges, you know, shelter buildings are pretty common at other areas. Facilities, which could be a skate park, or a ice rink, or, you know, something of that nature. Morissette Ice Rink, or something like that.
I'm getting that ice rink.
Parks already have, obviously, parks and pathways that have been named, so, but the goal of their policy analysis was just to kinda look at something that we didn't have a policy on. So a policy is a written statement of your beliefs as an organization, and that, so we have a number of policies. We have the hand, you know, employee handbook, and we have many other policies, finance policies, purchasing policies, but we don't really have a way, in the absence of a policy in our organization, essentially, it either comes to the city administrator or the city council, and we kinda have a working relationship about which things would come where, but this would give us a little bit more. And so I'd advise the council, too, that, yeah, with anything that comes in front of the council, the students obviously had a time limitation for when the project was due in their semester and things, so that's why it's coming in front of you this evening. You could adopt it as-is. You can make modifications. So council member Bjork, if you're uncomfortable with specific language, you can strike that, you know, by motion or out of the policy document. Or you could provide guidance to staff about what things you think might need to be changed, and then we can bring it back to you after the fact. But it's an opportunity for you to get your questions answered about kinda the nature of the project. And also, it's something that staff felt that there was a need for. This is not something the council has said previously, we really need to have this. So I could understand also if the council is not interested in even having a policy on this, and kinda leaving it the way it is, which is, city administrator will figure it out when the, when the, when things come forward. But any direction you could provide would be helpful, and then give us some opportunity to provide feedback to the students and their professors. So I think they're getting a grade on this, too, so.
I don't know if it passes or not.
They fail?
Yeah.
I don't think they have to get it passed in order to pass the class, although, if I was a professor, that's something I would think about doing. Make it pretty interesting.
If I may ask some questions, you looked at, looks like you looked at City of Chippewa Falls and City of Wenaki. Can you tell me a little bit about those policies?
Wenaki, kind of based, theirs more sponsorship, and that was something we were trying to avoid, where almost any, even a business could donate a certain amount of money and have their name on the park. We wanted to try and avoid the whole sponsorship thing with River Falls and keep it, I guess, more pure, if you wanna say that. Whereas Chippewa Falls, this is pretty similar to what Chippewa Falls has in place. Theirs is relatively new as well, within the last few years. They didn't have a policy in place, and somebody said we probably should, and something that they did themselves.
You also mentioned the US Bank Stadium as something you looked at?
Yeah. So when we first started out, like, back in September, we were kind of up in the air, kind of researching corporate versus private sponsorships. So we just kinda looked at kinda the process that they went through to get a big, like, US Bank. And we also looked smaller at First National Bank Stadium in Hoffman Park, and just kinda that process. And this is not anything like that. This is just, you know, small, private donors. So that's kinda just why we cited that, so.
Okay, more, more citizen donations than corporate?
Yeah.
I'm in, I'm in favor of the policy, because I think it's a good idea to have a method for doing things that makes it less arbitrary. It's not that I don't trust Mr. Simpson's judgment, but, so anyway, thank you for doing this.
Oh, you're welcome.
I have just a comment, and it's not, it's not anything I think needs to be amended. In fact, I think it's something I'd ask staff to take to maybe the historic planning commission, or the Historic Preservation Commission. I'd like to see us plaque or put some narrative in each of these parks, and we don't have to do it right away in each park, but over time, I'd like to see us put some plaques with some description of why they were named for, the people they were named for, and what they, what the, what the reason was. As time passes, probably people are gonna forget who Spike Hoffman was, for instance, and it'd be good to be able to go back and see that he was the mayor of town. So, I don't know if you guys had any discussion about any placking or signage that was involved, or if that time did not allow for that, or...
I don't think we really talked about it too much, no.
So that would be my request, I guess, to the staff.
I think, Mr. Morissette, you have a good point there.
Can you call my wife and tell her that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that. Well, you answered my questions, and I, I'm in favor, as I said before, when I first started talking about, I'm in favor of us having a naming right policies. There's no question. I think this is laid out fairly well. I do, I'm not a fan of that background research in this fashion that it's there, because I, I just know that "mayes" do become practice too often, and I'd prefer for that to happen, but not necessarily as a policy within our written policy that you have to go back and do a, even suggest, because if you did it for one person, then they're gonna say, "Well, why didn't you do it for the next group?" And so I would prefer that we would take out the educational background check and the driving record and not have that part of this policy.
Can I ask your point of clarification on that, maybe before you offer an amendment? Is there some agreement from the council that you want to have, for lack of a better term, some kind of credibility threshold, or, that's basically what this policy, this part of the policy, although it can be worded differently, was trying to say that, yes, the council does consider who is being named when they name something, because it does have some, some impact on the facilities in the community. So there are communities that don't have this in their policies. I mean, they say if, it's kinda up to the vote of the council at the time, and they don't have any formal research or anything. We want, we discussed this with the students, and this was something, the policy is, we're gonna check, kinda make sure that everything looks good. And then there's a specific language in here that would be difficult to enforce, but at least it would give you the ability to do it, is if things go haywire,
Yep.
-which I'm not gonna name any number of celebrities in the news these days, where if they had decades of good reputation and then something triggered bad reputation, you would give the council the ability, too, to say, "I'm sorry, but it just doesn't represent us anymore," so.
Well, I think you're, that background research check is gonna happen regardless if we have it in writing or not. I think we, as good community members, are gonna look and say, "Oh, Joe Schmo was, you know, convicted this or that." And I think those things happen even unwritten, that it will occur. And with the council still having the final vote, that this name gets placed on, on there, I think there's also that double check on it, too. So I just think it's an expense and a time that doesn't need to be on there.
I'd actually like to offer an amendment. This is on, I'm looking at the bottom of page one of the naming rights policy. It's page 50 of our pack. I would like, I move to delete, this record's research may include, and then the three bullet points. So the paragraph would then read, "Upon successful completion of background research by city staff authorized with a release form signed by the applicant, period." Next sentence would be, "The City of River Falls reserves the right to rename any park or facility if the person for whom it is named turns out to be disreputable or acts in a disreputable way."
Yep, good.
Just take out the three bullets, is it?
Yeah, and the three bullets.
Yep, that does it.
Second.
So I believe you, I believe you have a motion, a second on the amendment.
Yep. So, do, yep. So we got a first and a second on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Now, back to the original, I have a fir-, did I get a second on the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, first and second on that one. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Guys, get an A.
So you get a B+ because we had to pull something out.
We had to fix it.
Good job, guys.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, we'd just like to say thank you. We write a lot of papers and do a lot of research for, and this was definitely something different that we don't normally get to do for our classes.
Good.
So we'd like to thank the city, and especially the city staff that helped us, got us along the way.
Well done.
Glad to hear it.
Good job, guys.
Thanks. Oh, let's see. Under our next resolution, approving the option agreement extension for iMark molding. This resolution would approve an extension in the option agreement with iMark molding, involving an approximately eight-acre lot in the Whitetail Ridge Corporate Park.
I move we approve the resolution approving the option agreement extension for iMark molding.
Second.
Anybody have any questions or comments about this? Otherwise, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next we move on. We got some reports. The first report we're gonna do is a River Falls History Storyboard Report by our new intern, our GIS intern, Tyler Goldie. Gold? Goldie?
You got it.
I got it.
Yep, I got it.
Tyler, while you're setting that up, is that true, you have the best commission group there is in all of the city?
Oh, yeah. All the state, nation.
That's what I thought.
All right. Well, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Tyler Goldie, and I'm the GIS intern here in the Community Development Department. I've been here since May, and I'm actually graduating from UWRF on Saturday, which is exciting.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
So, when I came in, I kind of adopted some projects that were in progress, and this is one of the, one of the big ones, was a historic story map. So the problem that kind of sparked this project is that we live in a really historic city. A lot of the buildings that we use, you know, today are over 100 years old, especially on Main Street. And a lot of the history in the city is not really easily accessible to every, you know, the everyday person. I've been working a lot with the Historic Preservation Commission, and they, I mean, there's, there's so much information out there, but nobody knows it's there, because you can't just go and, you know, read someone's mind. So the goal with this project was to try and get all this information in one, one place. We wanted to make it digital and really user-friendly, so it's really, you know, easy for anybody to, anybody to access and use. And then I think story maps are the way to go for this. So what is a story map? It's basically a web application. It's pretty much like the websites that you and I use every single day. It's a, it's a great way to combine text, images, maps, and they can be interactive, which makes them really interesting. And Esri, who created the story maps, they described it in a great way. They say, "It's a great tool to harness the power of maps and geography to tell a story." Because I can, you know, tell somebody about a historic building downtown, and that's great, but if I can put them in front of it with information in their, in their hand, and they're looking at it, I think it creates a lot better of a, you know, a good experience for the person. And why we use them? Story maps are very accessible. They're formatted to all devices, whether it be your laptop, tablets, phones. They're easy to use. All you have to do is click on the link, and you can start exploring the history. And it's a great alternative to paper. I know the Historic Preservation Commission has in past put out walking tour brochures, and this is a really great way to save money with printing, and it's always gonna be on the web. And they're easily expandable. So if we find more information about different buildings or different sites that we wanna put on there, it could be added very, very simply. And so I created two different versions to this. The first version, it's a, it's a very comprehensive history of the city. It starts off, you know, the founding of the city and goes kinda, it's very detailed of all the different buildings, when they were built, how they changed hands over the years, what they were, you know, what businesses were in and out. And the best experience for this version would definitely be on a computer. And then the second version is a walking tour, so it has points on a map that you can click on, and they'll give you a brief description of different, of different buildings or areas around town. And the best, the best use for this version is definitely, I would say, on your mobile device, walking around. And one of the things I wanted to do with this project is try and involve the community in some way. So what I just wanted to do is crowdsource some information. So when these are released for version two, I have my contact information on the introduction, and it's, I state that, you know, if there's a historic place or a building that you think should be on here that we missed, you know, feel free, please email me, because I think it really, really lets the community feel like they're involved in this project. And then, these links will be posted on the city website and the Facebook page early to mid next week. uh, early to mid next week. Um, so those will be live then and I'm gonna give you a little sneak peek of them. May, maybe? This is all frozen. Okay, well, I guess it's not working, but, um, they're really cool, I promise. So, I guess, uh, does anybody have any questions?
So, will be, people will be able to see them at our website?
Yes, yep.
Be, there'll be a header for them to follow and everything?
Yep, yep, I'm hoping, uh, well, I'm hoping to get them, uh, they'll be on the, like, the news section of the front page of the city's website for a little while. Um, they'll also be on the Historic Preservation Commission page. Um, I'd really like to thank them. They did a lot of work with this project as well. A lot of the narratives was, they were really involved with. Um, and then, like I said, they'll, they'll be posted on the Facebook page and easily shared by anyone. It's just, it'll just be a link you have to click and it'll take you right there.
Will there be, um, posters or something in, uh, say, some of the downtown buildings saying, "Tour us on Facebook" or, or "Tour us online"?
I haven't thought about that, but it would be a good idea to try and advertise it a little bit. No, that's not the one I'm using. Mine's not live yet. No, that's okay. Hey, thanks for trying. Uh, anything else?
Any other questions for Tyler?
Comments?
No. Thank, thank, it, it sounds, I, it's gonna be interesting.
I wish it worked, I promise they're cool.
Yeah, oh.
I'm just encouraged that a young person is having a hard time with a computer.
Hey, what can I say? Okay, that's, that's all.
Good job, Tyler.
Thanks, Tyler, good job. I'm, I look forward to seeing them next week.
I'll let you know when they're out. I'll email ya.
Yeah, thanks. Okay, next, we're go, let's go to, uh, well, let's do the fund committee. Bridgette, give us a little, uh, update on the, the fund committee.
If this computer's locked up, they could be in trouble.
Some plug it, that's what I do.
Yeah.
It wasn't Tyler, it was the, uh, group before.
I thought it was gonna start with elections first and I was gonna change my hat, but...
Sorry.
Put on the fun hat. First, we have some elves in the audience that are in the, on the fund committee, some of our members. Uh, Carrie is one, she didn't wanna wear a hat, but... So, I should make her come up here.
You got a non-fun person on the fund committee for?
Diversity.
Right. Always get, she's, so she's Grinch.
Yeah. All right, so, the fund committee, we've been busy again this year. We have several events, um, that we do every year. We try to come up with new ideas each year. Um, sharing families, um, we kinda left off last year where we were getting ready to deliver our gifts last year. Um, we helped three families, um, for a total of sixteen family members. Um, these pictures are from last year. We are currently working on three families again. We bit off a little bit more than we could chew last year with sixteen members, so we, um, lowered it to twelve family members and I think we did pretty well. We've got a lot of great gifts. Um, we are delivering tomorrow around two o'clock, so if you have a chance to stop by, you can, uh, see all the gifts that we've gotten for the families. They're over by my desk, if you know where that is. Um, we get a lot of support from all the departments in the city. A lot of the employees really love this, um, event. This is our thirteenth year of helping sharing families and it kinda grows every year for us. We did a hat collection out at the garage and we got a really great response, cause a lot of the guys don't like to shop. So, uh, Carrie actually went out with a hat and hit 'em up and we raised, I think, over a hundred dollars and got to do a little extra shopping. Um, what we do is, we have a, a list of the family wants. We have people, uh, sign up for those wants and then those who don't want to shop, they donate money or gift cards. And then our elves go shopping with the cash donations the weekend before the items are due at the journal. So, we really love this event and we always get a great turnout every year from the employees. Another one of our annual events is the holiday potluck. These are pictures from last year. Our potluck will be coming up in a couple weeks on the twentieth, I believe it is. And of course, everybody is invited here, the council members and employees. Uh, we get a lot of great food. We usually try to come up with something fun. Uh, last year, as you can see, Dan Trickle dressed as an elf and we had Santa stop by. We did an, a white elephant gift exchange. Um, we are gonna do a gift exchange again this year and we always seem to come up with, uh, some kind of surprises that we don't share with everybody and, so that is another fun event. Um, as you'll see through the slideshow, we love to eat. Um, we do a lot of potlucks and we do a lot of competitions for food. This was our soup competition. We usually do it in the month of January, out at the Public Works Garage. Um, a lot of times, the guys out at the garage, they don't really get an opportunity to come down here or to the other buildings, um, for the potlucks, cause they all have different shifts for lunches and, or they're shoveling, they're doing, pawing snow or doing something. So, we try to do it out at the garage, um, just to kind of give those guys a chance to all attend. So, this was a soup competition and Julie, uh, actually won the soup competition this past year. There's a lot of entries and everything's always really delicious. Um, we also try to think of different ideas for different interests. So, we had, I think this was the first year that we did a euchre tournament. Um, it was held at Johnny's and the fund committee buys pizza and whoever wants to sign up to play euchre, um, they all got together. And this year, Terry Swinburne won. Um, as you can, the thing that she's holding is actually one of our trophies. We have a lot of interesting trophies that we put together. Um, everybody really wants them. Um, we don't, we don't go with any kind of normal boring trophy. We try to make it good. So, this is a, we find the most interesting things at like treasures from the heart or the secondhand stores. Um, so that was her trophy that she's holding there. We also did a cribbage tournament in March. Um, a lot of people really like this also. As you can see, we even got, uh, the old police chief back, Roger LaCue, to come back and play cribbage, cause he really enjoyed it. Um, this tournament was won by Mike Noreen. And then, this was a new competition. We had a ramen noodle competition, so, um, whatever dish you brought, you would have to have ramen noodles incorporated in, in it somehow. And Dan Trickle and Ken Phil actually won first place. They made ramen worst. Uh, so, uh, Dan made the brats and they put cooked ramen inside them and they were actually really good. Uh, we had a lot of interesting, um, recipes. We had a cheesecake made with chocolate-covered ramen that were raw, so it was kinda crunchy, but it was chocolatey and so, it was pretty good. And it's, like I said about the interesting trophies, you can see Dan and Ken there on the far right, uh, is holding a trophy that Ken actually made. He shellacked three bars of ramen noodles and glued them to, I don't know if it was a bowling trophy or what it was, but everybody wanted that trophy, so, um, we tried to pass around the trophies. You know, if we had the competition again, it's kinda handed to the next person. So, um, that was a really good trophy. People are jealous of that one. Um, then we decided, um, to participate in Relay for Life in April. We kinda joined at the very last minute, um, probably about a month before the actual walk. Um, so we had a silent auction, we had a potluck fundraiser, um, and we actually collected over twenty-two hundred dollars in just a month. So, we did really well. We had a lot of support through the silent auction and the potluck fundraiser and just people donating in general to our cause. And, uh, the picture at the top there, the big one, is some of the employees that actually walked, um, the evening that they held the Relay for Life out at the high school. And another food competition, uh, dessert competition, that's always one of our favorites. Um, we really enjoy, um, I really enjoy Monica's cheesecake from Monica, she works at the library. If you need to come to a food competition, that's the one, cause there's a lot of good food there. Um, Nancy won first place and Terry won second place for the dessert competition. Uh, we also had a salsa competition. Buddy won the big, the big sombrero that year. And then kayaking the Kenny, um, this is our, I believe, our second year doing this. It was, it's a pretty popular event. We had about thirty participants. Um, they had a gorgeous day to do it and it's just a lot of fun. Um, it's just something kinda relaxing to do after work. Uh, you can see in the picture, we had some employees, some of their family and, and Tamara Jorowski in the engineering department even brought her dog with. Every year, we usually have a fi- family picnic. Um, it was held at Glen Park this last year. It was held a little bit later in the year, um, in August, a little bit before school started. Um, this year, we'll probably hold it a little bit earlier, um, to try to get a few more people to come, cause it was kinda near the end of the summer. Uh, Dave is usually, Dave and I think Dan are, are barbecuers. They barbecued up some chicken and everybody just brings a dish to pass. School supply, supply night is another one of our favorite events to give back to the community. Um, it's sponsored by one of the groups here in town and they held it at a church. Um, we were all asked to wear red, all the volunteers, so we could stick out. And what we do is, we shop with kids. So, um, donations are brought in, um, anything from backpacks to school supplies, to, um, notebook, pencils, markers, crayons, everything. Um, kids that are in need of school supplies, they come in and we are each assigned a child and we go around and help them shop for their school supplies for the year. So, we had, um, twenty-two city volunteers, there was a total of fifty volunteers and we served over two-hundred-and-forty students that night. This year, we asked, um, some of the firefighters to join us and asked them to wear their hats or some of their outfit and the kids just really, really loved that. So, um, next year, we hope they'll come back again and maybe we can get some of the police officers. I think the kids would really think that is cool also. So, we'll be hitting up Gordy for some of his officers. Uh, so I obviously did not put the slideshow together because I am a Vikings fan. And the potluck was called a Viking Packer Potluck, because the Vikings are currently the champion of the division. So, uh, Scott Nelson always, um, hosts this event over at the fire department and he did let me, um, help with the decorating this year. So, there was a, a few more tables that were purple and gold. Um, usually, he has one table off in the back corner that's purple and the rest are green and yellow, so, um, I, we did...
Mayor, I move we strike that purple one.
Yeah. We did clash a little, but I got my way and, and got more tables decorated, so, um, this is another event that everybody loves, cause, you know, we all love football and the fire department usually, uh, supplies the, I don't know, hot dogs or brats or chili or something like that and then everybody brings a dish to pass. Um, but the Vikings, um, did beat the Packers earlier this year, seventeen to fourteen, so, just saying. And then Halloween, we had a great turnout for Halloween. We had so many great costumes. Um, the library dressed up, a lot of the city employees dressed up. That's another eve, uh, day that if you are able to come into City Hall, we had a lot of great costumes. Heather Johnson from the library won the Halloween costume contest and she's kind of in the middle on the right-hand side. She dressed up as Waldo. So, that's just some of the events that we did this year. Um, we look forward to more events in two thousand seventeen. We have a chili competition planned. Um, we hope to get a golf tournament put together, bowling outing. Um, we plan to, um, we didn't get around to helping the food shelf too much this year. We like to do that, so we plan to, um, incorporate that in our community service next year. Um, and again, council members, you're always welcome to join us, so, um, do you have any questions or comments about the fund committee?
The three families that, um, you donate to, are, are they in the city?
We don't know who they are. I believe, um, it's done possibly by county. I think agency, there's agencies that submit names for families in need and they submit it to the River Falls, uh, Sharing Family Program, so, yeah.
Any other questions for Bridgette?
You, thank you very much. It's really great.
For supporting us and...
Bet, thanks, Bridgette.
Helping us to have fun.
And, and Bridgette's gonna give us another report?
Yes.
On the election.
I'll put my work hat back on.
And than, and thanks to the other fund members too, we appreciate it. Even the non-fund member in the back?
Ran out of hats, yeah. All right, so I have just a, um, a short presentation on elections to give you just a summary of the presidential election and then our upcoming two thousand seventeen elections. Um, we have five polling locations. Earlier this year, we stopped using the National Guard Armory and we moved, uh, the District One Ward five voters to City Hall and we moved our St. Croix County voters, wards one through four, over to the River Falls Public Library. Um, as of right now, we have ten thousand one hundred and twelve registered voters in the city of River Falls after the November election. We typically, um, have eighty to eighty-five poll workers. We did use approximately a hundred and twenty-five poll workers for the presidential election this year. Just a little recap, um, of the November election. Uh, this clerk's office just finished putting in two thousand fifty-one new voter registrations. We processed two thousand two hundred and forty-seven absentee ballots. We had a total of seventy-five, seventy-four voters for the present election, which was about a seventy-five percent voter turnout for the city. So, the upcoming election dates, if, uh, we need a spring primary, will be February twenty-first and then the spring general election will be April fourth. We have four seats that will be on the April ballot. We have the alderperson at large, alderperson District One, Two, and Three. Um, these are two-year lengths of term. And then, to be a candidate, for our audience who are watching at home, they do need to be a qualified elector of the city and a qualified elector of the aldermanic district for which they're running. Um, there are some filing requirements. They do need to submit a campaign registration statement, a declaration of candidacy, and nomination papers to the city clerk's office. The nomination, uh, papers require signatures, so if, uh, candidate is running for alderperson at large, they will need two-hundred to four-hundred signatures. And if they're running for a specific, uh, district as an alderperson, they'll need just twenty to forty signatures. And a few dates to remember, uh, December first was the first day for candidates to start circulating their nomination papers for the two thousand seventeen spring election. Uh, December third is the last day for incumbents, which would be the four that, of you that currently hold your seat. Um, if you are not gonna be seeking reelection, you would, uh, need to file a notification of non-candidacy with the city clerk's office by the twenty-third. And then, the final day to get all your paperwork in is January third. Uh, we are closed Monday, January second, so the deadline is January third of two thousand seventeen and that is by five PM, you need to submit all your paperwork to the city clerk's All our forms and more information on how to run for a city council is on our city website and we also have, um, packets available in the city clerk's office if you don't wanna print them off. And that is all I have. If you have any questions... If you have any questions?
Bridgette, could you go back to the Elder Person at Large?
Because I think, uh, the law has changed. You only need a hundred to two hundred signatures now.
I only needed a hundred last time I ran. Oh, now you tell me. You're a rookie.
That's actually from the city Clerk's Office, are correct.
I think they, I thought they said two hundred to four hundred, but I'll have to check and...
It's, it's a hundred.
It is, okay.
I think the mayor is two hundred.
Yeah.
But I think it's down to, was it down to a hundred last year for me?
I will check on that.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
Any other questions? No? Thanks, Bridgette.
Alright.
And I, I'm assuming as always, we're still always looking for more people to help with elections? Poll workers and stuff?
Two thousand seventeen will be much slower.
Yeah.
And calmer. Um, but yeah, we'll have the governor's election coming up in, uh, another, in two thousand eighteen and that one's fairly busy. We usually get fifty to sixty percent turnout or so, so... So, yeah, we're always looking for poll workers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Bridgette.
Okay, next we'll have Administrator's Report. If anybody has any questions for Scott or whatever Scott's got for us?
While you're thinking of those questions, uh, I did re- wanna remind the council and the public that the city offices this year are closed on December twenty-third, December twenty-sixth, and January second, based on the way the holidays fall. So, that's December twenty-third, the twenty-sixth, and January second. We have been asked and we accommodated, uh, as we typically do for elected officials, Representative-elect Shannon Zimmerman is gonna have a listening session at River Falls City Hall, uh, in the council chambers here, December twenty-eighth at five PM. Public is welcome to attend that. I wanted to mention that, uh, the reception for Lu- uh, Luann's retirement is two-thirty to four o'clock on, um, this Friday and the, and, and anybody who would like to wish, uh, Luann well is welcome to attend, so that, that's open, available to the public that may wanna come and, uh, wish her well. The Fund Committee, I can't remember what the acronym has been turned into now, but at one point it was, uh, Fellowship, Unity, and Networking. Um, they're shaking their heads, so, I mean, it, just a reminder to the council, uh, we do appreciate the support that the council provides for us to do that. There's a number of, um, reasons we do it. One is that we think you oughta have some fun at work, um, so, this, the simple name kind of applies, but also that, uh, we wanted to find ways for our employees to be connected to one another, based on their various facility, the facilities they work to. Uh, we think that not only makes it, uh, more fun for them to work, but also creates those relationships, um, across departments, which is, uh, in keeping with our one-city philosophy of, uh, supporting each other and all the work they do to serve the public. So, um, I think it's very important for us to do that. Appreciate the work of the, the committee and I think it's, it's paying, uh, huge dividends, um, for employees, um, their engagement, um, their satisfaction with their job and then obviously that, that shows, I think, in the service that we're providing to the community. I was gonna mention the hundred signatures thing for at-large. That is a recent law change, so we can get that reflected, um, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. This is the final meeting of two thousand sixteen council, so the next one will be in, in two thousand seventeen. We typically don't have a second council meeting unless somebody wants to make a motion to do so.
Anybody have anything for Scott?
I'd like to make a comment if I could. Um, last week, the Kinney Corridor Project, what a wonderful job. It was so well organized, so well laid out. I've been to a lot of, um, workshops across the country and I can't compliment them enough. The team that put that together, it was just a great job and it was outstanding.
Thank you. I think they did a wonderful job. And it's a, reminds us of the kinda community we get to work in, which, which is a pretty good one.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, I move for adjournment.
Second. Okay, where's your...